We'll start in a few minutes. Our zoning administrator had to go back to the office and his assistant had to go back to the office, so they're kind of important. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait till they get back from across the street. I'm gonna call the planning commission of Henry County to order for October 19th, 2023. If we'd have a row call, Sean, do you want to do that?
Here.
Okay, thank you. You received earlier or picked up earlier this week the minutes from our last meeting, which was September 21. Are there any corrections? I, one thing I saw was a typo on the second page, which said flight patterns instead of flight patterns. Other than that, everything looked correct. Was there a motion to approve by Dale? Second? Okay. Any other discussion? Modifications, corrections? If not, all in favor, aye? Opposed nay? Passes seven zero. Presentation by Corey Murphy. This is the, you've got a copy of this also earlier this week. It's a proposed state road 109. That would be Highway 109 and I-70 north of Knightstown corridor study. Corey, you are on.
Green light. Okay, ready to go. Let me, let me start off with what I'm asking for and then what I'm not asking for. I'm not asking for money. No, there's some dollars and cents in this. I'm, I'm asking for an endorsement to pursue the study. And I'm asking you either authorize your administrator to participate in as a stakeholder in the, in the committee, helping guide the study. And if one of you want to participate as well, be more than welcome. The town of Knightstown is interested in this occurring. They are prepared to make a financial contribution. The county redevelopment commission would be the primary funder for this, but they have not made a final decision on funding because they wanted to make sure there was support to pursue this. This corridor, the state road 109 corridor, or exit 115 on I-70, with the provision of water and sewer in the very near future, we anticipate that corridor to become very active. And we want to be ahead of the growth in terms of planning, to the extent possible. And so that's the real purpose of this, is to try to put some thought into, so the second paragraph, so if you go past the cover letter, and then it's on page two on my copy. State Road 109 corridor improvement plan, Henry County, Knightstown, in the project understanding section. The second paragraph. Interested in undertaking a strategic planning initiative that will provide short and long-term recommendations for local land use, that you guys, and so, and the county commissioners. Transportation management, place making initiatives to ensure that this key corridor grows in a thoughtful and manageable way. The, the second bullet point, establish a strong land use direction strategically aligned with the economic development goals of the county and the town of Knightstown. Discourage land development practices that compromise roadway capacity and operations and destroy the character of the community. Advance economic development goals by leveraging planned infrastructure investments and promoting the efficient use of land, so on and so forth. Now, in this document, the timeline's gonna need to be adjusted. You know, we started the discussions on this earlier this year, so the timeline will have to be adjusted and pushed out a little bit. But you're my last stop in terms of making sure that there's an interest in, in pursuing the study. Like I said, Knightstown's interested. I believe the county redevelopment commission will make the funds available. I appeared before the county commissioners and had a very similar conversation with them. They endorsed pursuing this corridor study. And I'm here before you, asking you the same, because while it didn't say zoning, I said zoning proactively. The water and sewer is going to be sized to accommodate future growth along that corridor, and specifically housing. And the commuting distance and the labor shed from just south of I-70 on State Road 109 is different than the commuting pattern and labor shed, say, in the industrial park here in Newcastle. We're able to, we're able to capture more of the Indy metro market. So I think it's a real prime opportunity for housing, general business, maybe light industrial. But that's what the purpose of the study is. Happy to answer any questions?
Have you looked at any other companies other than just this design group for different quotes or different formats, or is this so finite in what they do?
So no, I have not, but I'm really comfortable with this, with this company. They assisted our East Central Indiana region in Ready 1.0. They're doing some work in downtown Newcastle. This is right up their, right up their alley.
In the paper, a few weeks ago, they were talking about a proposed housing development of like 600 units at that interchange. What, is that getting ahead of the game, or is that out of the box, or what?
My guess on interpreting that is that was, that is what the water and sewer is sized to accept. I'm not aware of anything specifically being planned, but it wouldn't surprise me. You know, the moment the water starts to flow and the moment the sewer starts to flow inside the pipe, it's gonna be a prime area.
Especially considering Hancock County only has two exits off of, off of 70.
I, I guess said it, said it a different way. You're going to be working whoever's on the commission here. You all are gonna be hearing cases whether we do this or not. I think this effort hopefully helps in that manner.
Corey, this is where the new medical center is going in, right? Going in the same area?
Same corridor.
You said Knightstown's very interested, of course. Would it possibly be their RDC as well, funding, you said the county RDC?
You know, I'm not sure where their funding's coming from.
Okay.
But I, I've been working with their town council president, Roger Hammer.
Well, it's probably immaterial for our purposes, but it's just. Other questions, comments? I did listen to your presentation to the commissioners. Very, very similar. And it is our next opportunity to grow and potentially grow large.
I will make the motion to move forward, to give our blessing for you to move forward.
Okay, it's been moved by Bobby and seconded by Marsha to move forward with this corridor study. Any other questions, discussion, comments? If not, all in favor, aye? Opposed nay? Passes seven zero. You've been blessed twice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have case number 2260, which is a CAU for a liquor store in Mount Summit. You have information before you, no staff recommendation, but our zoning administrator said that he would give some history and comments. I'm gonna turn it over to Tom.
This is a request for a CAU for a liquor store in Mount Summit. The building, I'm sure you all know where it is, and it was a convenience store, grocery, across the street from Thousand Degree Pizza. And the gentleman that purchased this a little over a year ago, from, he's buying on contract from folks who operated that business there for a long time. This, this project has had its fits and starts over the last year trying to get things winded up. It's a basic CAU. You have the staff reports and the briefing on it. It does meet the standards for the area. I have not received any comment from anybody for or against it. There may be somebody here in the, in, in the audience that wishes to speak to it. I think that the, the report speaks for itself.
Is it closed or open currently?
It's, it's currently closed.
For reasons that you stated in your report?
Yes, and it's. All the surrounding property owners within two parcels deep. Yeah, you didn't get one. Yours, yours came back for some reason. Said it was undeliverable. And it just came back today. That was today, or was it yesterday? I don't know, I just, I think it was this morning it came back as undeliverable, which I thought was odd. That probably got them confused. Which way did they go when they leave the building? Yeah. Well, that's okay, because in Mount Summit, there are some Newcastle addresses. There are.
It's a mixed up world. Okay. Being a CAU, you've got the three questions, but I.
And, and I, I believe that someone may be here.
We do have someone here.
To present.
To share whatever you want to share. So come up to the mic and as long as the base is green, you're live. If it's not green, press the button and it'll be green. So whatever you'd like to share with the planning commission.
We can ask that, can we, just a, just a minute. Are you concerned that you did not get notification?
I didn't know what it said, you know? My idea, whatever you'd be notified for.
Yeah. It was, it were to like all the other notifications that there would be a meeting tonight and what it was in regards to. And that's all that's in there. And if you had objections, to appear or send something in writing. If you have no objections, we'll continue. If you have no objections, we'll continue.
Good evening. Pat Rooney here on behalf of Navjat Singh, DBA Liquor on the Rocks for B2260, CAU for package liquor store at 101 West Main Street, Mount Summit. A petitioner bought the property as a vacant convenience store in 2022, and then applied for and received a package liquor store license on April 4th, 2023, is DL 333 2956. Pursuant to statements from ATC and Excise, the petitioner added the demising wall in order to partition off the liquor store from the rest of the building, which petitioner intends to lease to third parties. Based on these statements and approvals from ATC, petitioner assumed it was in compliance with all ordinances. And petitioner was later informed that it needed this CAU in order to use the property as a liquor store. Thereafter, petitioner hired Howard Smiley of Architectural Experience, who submitted the necessary plans. And as further described in the staff report, the proposed use is in line with development of local business areas, and a liquor store is an accepted use if the CAU is approved. The proposed use does not conflict with the code. The petitioner has and will continue to follow all federal, state, and local regulations. And the petitioner has and will continue to apply for all necessary construction and remodeling permits based on the foregoing petitioner respectfully request that the CAU be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Up to this point, Tom, has everything been crossed off to be considered for the CAU? Because I, reading the history, it's been up and down and delays and responses and open and close. Where are we at today? Are we in a position to consider the CAU from your office point of view? Are, are we in a position, or have they checked all the boxes to be able to consider the CAU? I guess it's, okay.
Yeah, so when was the, I don't remember the name you said that you hired for the design firm or engineering, or who, when was that done?
Approximately a month ago.
A month ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've, I've got several other questions and concerns, because I know that, you know, there's been some, you know, no building permits, no demo permits. This has been kind of ongoing for a while. And while building, CAU is separate from any of the building and stuff, but you can't, you can't get an occupancy until you get your CAU, which, and then, but you need to have all your building permits, all the demo permits, all the things done prior to. And I know that there were, you were instructed to close until you got all of that done. And it didn't happen until just recently. I guess you want to address that a little bit? I'm a little concerned regarding the fact that communications may have not been followed from this office, and just recently closed and temporarily closed on Friday.
Yeah, and, and so I was just involved last week. And so I think before my involvement, there was some misunderstandings and miscommunications and.
Can you explain those misunderstandings and miscommunications?
Yes, I think there, there's a language barrier that the petitioner is, is not understanding that they are not in compliance and that they had to shut down. And, and so, once I explained that to them, they shut down that same day.
Thank you.
When was the, when did the applicant file for the CAU?
Roughly a month ago. As soon as, as soon as they hired the, the architect, they've worked together to, to get the CAU filed, but I don't know the exact date it was filed.
I believe.
December 21st, 2022?
2022.
Was when the CAU was initially filed? Oh, yes. But then they supplemented it a month ago because it was lacking the necessary plans. It was my understanding.
We first found out that there was something going on there when, when the applicant. Yeah, August of 2020. When the, when the applicant requested a address assignment change. And they wanted to split the building in two and have suite A and suite, suite B. That was in July of 2022. And we wondered why. We were having a little bit of a problem trying to figure out why. And, and that, they just said they had two businesses they wanted to put in there. We later heard that they were talking about doing a liquor store in there. And that, in fact, was what they had told the alcohol tobacco people, that they wanted to split it in two and have a package place in one end and a grocery store, beer and wine on the other end. So they've been working on this for a while. And they were informed at that time that a CAU for a liquor store was required. I have lots of emails here, back and forth, between someone who was working on their beverage permit. I'm not sure exactly who that was. I have their email and the name, but they had hired somebody to, to work on that with them. And I told them several times, they have to get a CAU for a liquor store. So they've known for a long time that they had to do that, and what the steps were. And I sent all that information to those people in Indianapolis, I believe, and to Mr. Singh. That information was provided, what the steps were to do that.
Yes, and I think the misunderstanding was, you know, that's Landis and Landis is their third-party consultant that they hired to handle the liquor license. And so I think their understanding was that once the liquor license was approved, that meant the CAU was approved and everything was approved since the liquor, they didn't think the liquor license would be approved for that location without the CAU being approved.
Well, I, I think the liquor board would tell you that, and at every liquor board hearing I've been to, they always make a point of telling people that they don't have anything to do with any building permits or any other local permits that might be required. All they handle, they don't even talk that. So.
Yes, and I understand that. I don't think the petitioner understood that. And that's kind of why we're here today. And so they've since supplemented their application as, as necessary, to my understanding.
Okay, so in, but in some aspects, they, and they didn't even really start, they were, they were told by the, the state IDHS that they needed a design relief. were, they were told by the, the state IDHS that they needed a design release. And the person working on their case asked for more information and that was not forthcoming. And in September, I believe, of last year, they suspended working on that case because they couldn't get any information. I couldn't get any more information. So it, it sat there for a long time. Nobody knew anything that was going on until it basically, they did some work and they opened up. So there's been a long, long history of not much communication.
Yes. I, that's certainly the way it seems. They since then have gotten that construction design release and, and hired the architect and are, are working between the architect and myself to bring it into compliance, get the CAU. And then once everything, they have the CAU and all necessary permits, then they plan to open back up, but they will remain closed until they have the necessary permits and approval from the court to reopen for business.
So I guess this is a question for you, Tom. Have any permits been obtained as of today? Whether it's demo, building, fence, sign, I mean, I don't know the list of permits that are needed to be obtained, but none of them have been obtained? For any permitting? Any of the work that's been done in the past or any work that needs to be done current to get brought up? No permits? Okay.
The, just the state construction design release?
Yeah.
Was obtained and.
Well, I'm talking to local permits here.
Right. But it was our understanding that we needed the CAU before any local permits would be approved?
They, they usually can happen at about the same time.
Oh.
Oh, excuse me. Application, the application shows what was needed. And, you know, the design release and building permits were not part of the CAU application.
Yes. So our, our plan was to get the CAU and then apply for the, all the necessary permits.
And that's, that's, that's the order that should have been done in?
Yeah.
And at any rate, you shouldn't have done any construction without.
Yes. No, I understand. Again, I was not involved at that time.
I, I understand that. I know you got in at the last end.
Yeah.
So can we proceed or do we need to get the permits in front of the CAU? Because.
I guess we could maybe, Sean, would you care to weigh in on that?
So, you know, you could, and I think I've done this in past, you could conditionally say you approved on the basis that those permits are granted and that, that on that condition, you could do some sort of conditional.
We've done that even recently, this year.
And petitioner would, would welcome that.
Marcia.
There's a real difference in, instead of doing a conditional, just allow, making sure we get the permits and then just doing this one? You have the same thing, I would.
Well, the only difference is with this one is that we have a preliminary injunction to a litigation, a court case, he's involved right now, it's still pending. And so if we were just to approve it flat out, then that may impact our litigation options to, to enforce compliance.
And I guess what I'm saying, instead of okaying with conditions like you're suggesting, right, when you just, you just not okay it, wait till the permit's obtained, instead of hoping it happens and then kind of get out of the seat, you just do the two steps instead of one, you know, engage the stuff. But I guess I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, the spirit, the process is not being followed. And I don't want to reward that. You can prove to me that you can do what we require you to do and then we will act accordingly. So I guess I'm trying to speak to all that.
Well, and that's what. So I, as I was going through all of this, I wrote down four options. And the first one, I wrote it down as an option, but it's very punitive. So I, I would, I would not suggest we do it. It's to deny the CAU. But if you do that, then they have to wait a year. And that's way, that's very punitive. Second is table until all building permits are obtained, all inspections are done, and then go through the CAU process, approve the CAU, which I'm like you, I don't know that, in my opinion, that the spirit, I agree with you. And then the other is a, a conditional, which they would have to stay closed. But I'm, I'm with you, Terry. I'm kind of leaning toward and unless there's more discussion, I think I'll go ahead and make the motion to table this, approving the CAU until all permits, all inspections have been completed. And then we can come back. Then, then we will know that everything has been done the way it's supposed to go.
Do we have the survey yet?
We, we have a legal description.
Okay, because it's, okay, could, okay.
Okay, we have a motion that we table this until all the required permits, certain inspections done. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Bobby and seconded by Terry. Any further discussion, comments?
I, I just have a question. So there, they have a temporarily closed sign right now. So that means they.
They still have to stay closed. Is that correct, John? Is that correct?
On the litigation aspect of it, so there is a preliminary injunction to prevent operation there without permission for use. We wish the court, prior to, prior to this hearing, to call that. The court strongly indicated to the owner that he's not to operate at all. And so that's where we stand with litigation. But there is an injunction to prevent any of the operation.
So they're basically closed regardless of all of these right now. If they follow what they've been doing, I appreciate counsel here for this call because, you know, the minor thing is they have not an operating speed at all. So I appreciate that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table until inspections and. Any other discussion? If not, brokow vote.
On the vote to table B two-two-six-zero, Dale Paul.
To table?
Oh, yes.
David Fisher? Kenny Grant?
Yes.
Marcia Grant? Garrett Madden?
Yes.
We appreciate it. Matty Stiefel. I think the petitioner has some direction for our book that needed more for this. But you're not denying it, are you?
Thank you.
Next case is case twenty-two-seventy and twenty-two-seventy-one. Is your microphone?
Use your microphone, please. Please speak up so I can hear.
Okay. And the microphone helps.
Kenan?
Yes.
This, in the past, we've, we've kind of done some of these. This is really kind of two cases for our paperwork wise. But it's a rezone. And then if it's rezoned.
CAU.
The CAU.
Okay.
You can talk about them both at the same time. And we do on the ones where we've done this. We pretty much know why we have to rezone it. And that's a technicality.
Okay. Well, in order, twenty-two-seventy is the Rockin' S Ranch to rezone approximately five and a half acres highway business HB one to agricultural A1. This is on the north side of forty, west side of Knightstown, across the road from high school in Knightstown. You have all the information that was shared by the zoning administrator about the comp plan and the zoning map. And the fact that it's septic well, formerly, I think, the Catholic Church on the west side of Knightstown. And so you have history. There's a residence to the east. Have you gotten any information back from any of the neighbors or anyone that you sent the certified letters out to?
No, I, I haven't had any response from any of the neighbors. There's been some general response from people in the area or people that have driven by there or even people that have, have gone to church there. And they're very much in favor. So.
Like to see.
The response has been really good.
Okay. It's a beautiful church driving by. I'm sure they do wish to have someone keeping that up. Okay, you've gone through the comp plan. There will be a rezoning request that Tom has put together. And then after the rezone, there'd be a CAU for an event center, which you also have a report. And that's under twenty-two-seventy-one.
You can vote on those, vote on those separately.
Right. Right. So the first part is a rezone from HB Highway Business one to agricultural one, which would make the CAU permissible. Any other, would you like to come forward and share anything at this point? I would assume you're a rep for the petitioners?
I am, and I will try not to mumble.
The mic's on, it's less likely.
Because I also have some hearing difficulties, so I appreciate that. My name's Brian Tuie. I'm an attorney. My address is fifty South Meridian. Thank you for hearing our case. We've had a terrific experience working with America and Tom Green. So we appreciated their assistance because I had never done a zoning case in Henry County before, done them around the state. And the last comment I had before we start is, this is about as cool a room to have a zoning hearing as anywhere in the state of Indiana that I've.
Larger than most.
Yeah. Here with me tonight is Stephanie Longworth. She's the owner of the church. And Esther Cabera, she will be the person who will run the event center. And I've got a very brief PowerPoint, but only if the planning commission's interested in seeing it, I'll explain what the plan to do is.
Yes. If you do a Reader's Digest version, and we have.
I'll give you the Reader's Digest.
Thanks to the copies.
Okay, this is perfect. Thank you very much, Commissioner. So this is a five, about five and a half acre site. As you said, it's on the north side of forty. It's right across from the Knightstown High School. To the left, which is the west, there's some residential homes. To the right, which is the east, there's a rental home. And then there's a bus maintenance facility. And then to the north of it, all this land is owned by Ms. Longworth and her husband up in here. This church has been vacant for about three years. The Catholic Church in, you know, in central Indiana is sort of consolidated into different churches. It looks bigger than it is. It's only about thirty-three hundred square feet. And if we could go to the next slide, please. It's sorted, that's actually just one back, please. It's sorted tailor-made for weddings and class reunions because, you know, it was a church. And so there's a parking lot already there. You can see around it. It's, you're just doing great. That's perfect. Thank you. There's a parking lot around the site right here. Holds about sixty-four cars. If we go to the next slide, please. There's, that's looking at the church from the parking lot. Sort of you're looking sort of southwest there. The exterior of the church is in pretty good shape, but Ms. Longworth plans to update it. It, it's deferred maintenance is the word I think you'd use. Next slide, please. That's the front door. Good-looking building, stained glass windows. Next slide, please. That's part of the parking lot. Again, looking sort of southwest there. Next slide, please. So that's the interior of the church. And, and that's looking towards the altar. You can see, it's, it's beautiful. It has a stunning wood ceiling in it. The floors are stone. You can see the stone in the interior. You know, the, the pews are in great shape. And, and Ms. Longworth just has to figure out how to just update it a little bit. As you might guess, the, the bathrooms in the basement are not in great shape, but they're planning on improving those. Next slide, please. You're doing great. And so there, that gives a good view of the ceiling. And those are the stained glass windows that would be looking out across towards the high school to the south. There, the, the next slide will be probably the last one we use. Now that's the altar. We'll go one more. If we don't, it's fine. You're doing fine. You're doing better than I do. Write down number ten. There you go. So the idea, members of the planning commission, is this, this is a very nicely landscaped, five and a half acre site. There's a terrific stand of trees over here on the left side of the building. And then there's this, like a meadow big yard over here. And then there's a lot of trees that screen the whole side off from our neighbors. And so, you know, this isn't going to be a place where you're going to have a giant event because it's only a thirty-three hundred square foot building and it's only five acres. But it's, it's on a highway with great access. It's got great visibility. And it will, if it's approved, it will allow Ms. Longworth to put a substantial sum of money into bringing it up to date. It will also have the benefit of putting this back on the tax rolls because it's been a church. There hasn't been, been paying any taxes. And so, and it'll generate income and jobs for the Knightstown community. Ms. Longworth lives about ten minutes from this site. And as I mentioned, she owns all the property around it. The, the last page is a summary page. So we would respectfully ask your favorable consideration of rezoning it and the CAU to allow for the use of this long vacant church. It'll add to the tax base. It'll allow the building to be improved. And we would suggest that because it's on a state highway, that's an appropriate use on that kind of location. And fortunately, the staff has also recommended approval. So that concludes our presentation. We'll try and answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Questions?
First of all, it's an awful beautiful building. We just recently approved one building out here on thirty-eight for a similar situation. I hate to see it taken away from the church atmosphere, but I'm also glad to see that you continue to use the building. Are you planning on restructuring anything or use the facility as is?
At least initially, we just want to use the existing building. We probably would add like a, a covered walkway on the west side of the building and maybe on the east side of the building. Because we're thinking of brides and, and groomsmen in range coming from the parking lot into the church. We just think we could add a, a covered area. And we also think that we might, the, the kitchen facilities in the basement are from the nineteen forties. So we might have to upgrade that. But those would be the initial improvements.
You said the restrooms are in the basement. How, how does ADA come into play on a building like this pre-existing?
There are actually two restrooms on the main floor also. One. And Stephanie, that And Stephanie, that, oh yeah, come on up.
There are currently, that's our biggest challenge, but there's one ADA compliant restroom today and two in the basement. And so we're trying to figure out how to fit a second one in on the main floor because honestly, the basement is kind of tough to, the stairs aren't going to be compliant for ADA. So we're only looking at using the top floor for event rental.
So the one would be like a unisex?
We'll probably do a family restroom. Yeah, we'll call it a family restroom, but yes.
Okay. If you have a large, well, you can't have too large a gathering, but a wedding would be a good example that you mentioned. And then the one might be problematic on the main floor.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can, there's room to add a second. We're just trying to figure out exactly the best way to fit it because we don't want to mess with the stone walls if we can avoid it.
Correct, okay.
That's, they're really pretty, so.
Other questions?
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. And there's a crossover on forty, which I, well, the south one that goes into the high school and this one goes into the church. It's the same crossover, but that's convenient being it's a divided highway.
Yes.
Any other questions? The staff recommendation is to approve based on comp plan and other things. Yes, go ahead. If there are no other questions, I guess. Yes. Any other questions? Was that a comment or are you saying ready for? Yes. Is there any further? Rita, do you have any public comment? You think it's a beautiful building too, don't you?
Yes.
I think everyone agrees it's a beautiful building. It's nice that it's prospective of not being vacant.
Yes.
Which means it'll probably stay longer in condition, better condition than being vacant. No public comment other than what's already been shared? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve the rezoning from HB one to A one. Is there a second? Second, okay, Dale and second by Marcia. It's a rezone. Dale and then Marcia made the second. Yes. Go ahead.
Before I do that, I have to, I'm going to get in trouble if I don't say this, but she called the vendor that was just down the road. She's very supportive of your product, so. And she'd be very happy to get help from an attorney and not be sued or something. She wanted to make all that to us tonight because she couldn't be here.
Thank you, because her father called me. And and I thought, uh-oh, when I got the call, but then he said essentially what you said too.
Yeah. All right. On motion to reason, Dale Cole? David Fisher? Ken Gray?
Yes.
Marcia Graffner? Terry Matty?
Yes.
Bobby Palmer?
Yes.
Lori Crichton? Now, pass, it's a reasonable pass.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't losing my mind. Commissioner Deller was asking if he wanted me to lock the office. I wasn't losing my mind.
Has that been communicated properly?
Yes, it has.
Okay, moving, moving on to the follow-up case, which is a CAU for the recently approved rezoning of the event center of Rockin' S Ranch. And you have the same information, very parallel. Now that it is officially A one, this is an acceptable use for the particular zoning that it is currently approved. And you have the history, you have the fact that it's comprehensive plan. And are there any comments before we go through with the three questions? We already ascertained there's no public comment, so if not, yes, Dale, use your microphone.
Dale, could you use your microphone? Use your microphone.
Because we're recording.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
Hey, on on the tavern, I read this, was a little hanky panky here on this for some time before they actually applied for a permit.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that.
Oh.
That's a different one.
I mean, that was on the first case. That was on the case we tabled for that reason. So you're you're correct. There were concerns. So on on this one, is there any discussion? If not, go ahead and read the three questions, counselor.
The first question is the proposed commission approved uses to be located in the zoning district where such use may be permitted. Dale Cole?
Yes.
David Fisher? Ken Gray? Marcia Graffner?
Yes.
Terry Matty?
Yes.
Bobby Palmer?
Yes.
Lori Crichton? Second question. The requirements set forth in the zoning district in this section for such commission approved use will be met. Dale Cole?
Yes.
David Fisher? Ken Gray? Marcia Graffner?
Yes.
Terry Matty?
Yes.
Bobby Palmer?
Yes.
Lori Crichton? Third question. The proposed uses are consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of these regulations. Will not substantially and permanently injure the appropriate use of the neighboring property and will serve the public convenience and welfare. Dale Cole?
Yes.
David Fisher?
Yes.
Ken Gray?
Yes.
Marcia Graffner? Terry Matty?
Yes.
Bobby Palmer?
Yes.
Lori Crichton? That's the beginning.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you returned to Indianapolis with favorable impressions of Henry County and the facility in which you spoke.
There's no question about that.
Well, good. Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, safe travels back. Yes, good luck with the venue and the restroom. Under old business, the one that comes to mind, we had a little bit of chatter prior to calling the meeting to order, was the airstrip and I think we're waiting state, state information. Is that correct?
Pardon me? What was the question?
On old business, the airstrip was the one that came to mind and I understood your waiting states feedback.
Yeah, he was not able to bring that to this meeting. Something about a twenty-five year anniversary and his wife was insistent that they.
So to be continued, possibly future meeting.
Very smart man.
Yes, he's been married a few years. Okay, any other old business? New business? Tom, anything new that for the good of the cause?
I don't have anything new.
Anybody else have anything new before you call for adjournment, Dale?
They'll talk, he'll talk to you about it after the meeting.
The only thing I've mentioned before, as we were waiting for him to come back from the Masonic building, was next meeting's on November sixteenth and if it's like it's been, we likely will have a case. We may have the airstrip case back. We don't know, but he'll let us know at least a week ahead of time if we meet on the sixteenth.
There really is not much to do for that if he can bring it back. We just have to get it on the agenda.
Okay, so if that's the only case, it may be a short meeting. That's a week before Thanksgiving. The next meeting's a week to the day before Thanksgiving. Yep, November sixteenth.
We may have another CAU hearing if on another liquor store, if they get their stuff in.
Okay.
If they're a little bit.
So we may have more than one, but the airstrip one would be quick if we get the state verification. Okay, because we've heard it already.
What'd you say, David?
We've had more event centers than liquor stores in twenty twenty-three. I I always depend on you, Dale, to make a motion to adjourn because I don't think there's any other business and it's been.